I'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. With a roll call. List the trustees, department heads, and officials present for this meeting. I would like to like a motion for the approval of the minutes, April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, Village Board, and file the September seventh, twenty twenty-two Committee Development Authority, December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two Joint Library Board, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three Architectural Review Board, the February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three Joint Library Board, March eighth, twenty twenty-three Architectural Review Board, and the March twenty, twenty twenty-three Financial Finance Committee Minutes as presented. Your motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? There be none, take a vote here, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there anybody in the audience wish to speak on a non-agenda? All right, very good. Number five here, we have business present, presented by the president. I'm gonna start off here with just wishing our clerk's office a happy Clerk Week. We're great, great clerk, but our clerk's working here and the office is really well-run by Katie. Thank you very much. First business, I'd like to confirmation appointment of Dave Armstrong to the Public Safety Committee for a twenty-three, twenty-four term. We did get, did ask our village council to kind of look at what we were doing with the appointment of a citizen committee member. And after a further review, what, what Mike came back to us and suggested is that the, as we don't necessarily have anything in the ordinance or in the code right now for an appointed appointment of a committee member, Mike felt it was a good idea for us to have three trustees in place for that Public Safety Committee and that that would probably help us when we start discussing the, if we don't have a full arm of trustees, it would be kind of, kind of difficult to run the committee. So, we agreed to appoint, I agree to appoint Dave Armstrong to the Public Safety Committee for the twenty twenty-three term. Therefore, I'd like a motion and a second, so we can vote on this.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, opposed. All right, we have five to one here. Okay, next, on to the confirmation of Citizen Committee Commission appointment. That was submitted here for the citizen committee for twenty twenty-three. I'd like a motion and a second on that.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. Give me a motion and second, any discussion on that at all?
Yeah, and I just want to clarify in public, so this is just the citizen appointments, separate from what we talked about at the last meeting.
Correct.
Okay. Just to update some of these, and it does look like there's a couple of new people where there were openings, so that's good.
Yeah, we have some openings and we did try to, I mean, there are some other people, I think, that we, there are a couple of additional openings that we'll be looking forward to add as we get through these. I think the best thing we can do is we get through the, the election of the trustees, the trustee to replace my seat, we look to see and appoint somebody else of some of these committees, but we'll look on that. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. All right, so this is the moment that everybody's been waiting for. So we're probably gonna take number six, resolution ordinance and action items. We'd like to make a resolution for our departing three longtime Village Board members for Mr. James Brunkwell, for Mr. Krieger, and Mr. Antoine. If you guys would step up here. Stand up. So, you all ready for this?
Yeah.
All right, so whereas Mr. Thomas Krieger, Mr. David Antoine, and Mr. James Brunkwell chose not to seek reelection, reelection to the Village of Grafton Board of Trustees and Village President, and after serving the people of Grafton for the community, for Mr. Krieger, April two thousand fifteen through April twenty twenty-three, Mr. Antoine, April twenty eleven to April twenty twenty-three, and Mr. James Brunkwell from April two thousand three and April two thousand twenty-three, twenty years. And whereas these three gentlemen have also served on the Village, uh, the Board of Public Works, Finance, various other village and subcommittees, we also have here for, um, Mr. Brunkwell, he served on Finance Planning Commission, Community Development Authority, and various other villages committees, and also for Mr. Antoine, that he served, volunteered a significant amount of time to Grafton Historical Society, Grafton Lions, Holiday Events. My gosh, what hasn't he done? He's also served on the Planning Commission, Architectural Review Board, and Finance Committee, and various other village subcommittees and, and other committees. Be it further resolved that the Village Board and Village Staff, the Village of Grafton, do hereby wish Mr. Antoine, Mr. Krieger, and Mr. Brunkwell the very best and thank them for all their contributions to the village. Gentlemen. So, this will go to Trustee Antoine. Thank you very much, Dave. Thomas Krieger, I'm gonna give you the styrofoam. For our last penumines. President Brunkwell, you have some very big shoes to fill, Phil, I have to say. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
We did, we've gone a long time.
Yeah, we can picture that, but before we do that, we need an offer, a motion, and a second, and a vote. So, I did an offer here, offered.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Offer motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
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 And no way of pictures, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Gentlemen?
Yeah, come on.
Marching orders.
I have never been shot.
Make sure my noggin isn't.
Put the tall in the middle.
Yeah, right. Okay. Okay, looks good. Okay, we're good.
And here. All right, and also, we have another resolution here from the Village Board. We would ask Officer Jim Crowley, stand up please and come forward. This is a Village of Grafton Resolution number zero zero nine, not number, not zero double four seven, but double oh nine, series twenty twenty-three. A resolution commending police officer James Crowley on his retirement and for years of service for the Village of Grafton. Whereas James, Jim, R. Crowley is retiring from the Village of Grafton employment on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, and after, after having diligently served the people of the Village of Grafton and the community. And whereas Jim began his employment at the Grafton Police Department in nineteen ninety-one as a police cadet, remaining in his position until nineteen ninety-three, whereas Jim was hired as a part-time sworn police officer at the Grafton Police Department in nineteen ninety-three, whereas Jim was hired as a full-time police officer February twenty-second, nineteen ninety-five, whereas during his tenure, Jim has conscientiously and capably exercised the responsibilities of his position with Grafton Police Department as a police officer for twenty-eight years and three months. And whereas Jim, during his tenure, Jim has worked for three chiefs of police and was an integral part of the Grafton Police Department and the community by his service as a highly regarded property and evidence technician, field training officer, and drug testing and evidence expert. And be it further resolved with the Village Board and the village staff and the Village of Grafton, you hereby wish Jim the very best on his retirement and all his future endeavors, resolve this first day of May, twenty twenty-three. Congratulations. I appreciate it. Thank you very much, Jim, and as such, it's a resolution. We need a offer, a motion and a second.
I will offer.
Motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Alrighty, now, aren't you?
One second, did you guys get a picture?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I can.
Okay, okay, thank you. You're welcome. All right, on to Resolution Number E, Ordinance Amendment, Chapter sixteen point oh four, Building and College Chapter sixteen point oh eight, and Chapter sixteen point one, two, presented.
Yes, by way of introduction, primarily, we are looking at a handful of housekeeping items with one policy item to review for the Village Board this evening. The reason this is coming directly to the Village Board is that there's no fee schedule change associated with this. Therefore, the Finance Committee would not be involved, and there is no specific committee governing building codes per se. So therefore, this code amendment is coming directly to Village Board. That said, the housekeeping items here within this proposed code update include updating references to various state code provisions with regards to building, electrical plumbing, updating permit requirements, installing consistent right-of-entry language within the three codes to allow for inspections. Basically, that is language within the codes that allows for our inspectors to go on property and inspect the work done under permits that have been issued. Lastly, the housekeeping also clarifies the delegated agent status for both commercial and residential codes. The village is a delegated agent in that the village enforces the building codes, plumbing codes, electrical codes on behalf of the state of Wisconsin. The policy item that would like to bring forward for board consideration is the remove, on, on page five of the building code, specifically section six, it'd be the sixteen point zero four point zero eight zero, then on page five, paragraph I. In that paragraph, we are, as staff, proposing to remove the terms abandoned, unoccupied, or foreclosed as it relates to structures, properties, or premises that exist whereby the village can inspect and follow up on property maintenance issues that are reported to us. Currently, the way the code sits, only abandoned, unoccupied, or foreclosed upon structures may be reported and followed up upon. We are simply, as staff, looking for the ability to follow up on items or items or properties that do not fall under those categories, in essence, broadening the language a bit in order for us to address reported property maintenance concerns. That is the policy item part of this series of code updates. With that, that's the ten-thousand-foot look at this proposal.
Okay, we'll look for a motion and a second to bring us to the table for discussion. Look for a motion to approve ordinance amending Chapter sixteen point oh four, Building Code, Chapter sixteen point oh eight, Electrical Code, and sixteen point one, two, twenty-four, as we noted.
I'll second.
A motion and second, any discussion on this at all? Jim, what's?
So, are you telling me, like, you can just enter any structure you want?
That they have requested an inspection.
If who's requested?
The, the person who pulled the permit.
Correct.
So, I think what, I think what trustee, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, but I think what he's looking at is that maybe we need to start from, like, who would administer the complaint? If somebody makes a complaint, then that would be sent.
So the, the entry section is separate from the complaint section. So the entry section is on page four. The right-of-entry. Is that what you're, that what you mean?
Yeah, I'm just wondering how this all shakes out, or it seems like there's a lot of wiggle room here.
So again, the, the, the maintenance policy consideration is totally separate from the right-of-entry section. Right-of-entry only applies to premises that have requested an inspection for a building permit. And the section that Jesse, Minister Tyce, just mentioned on page five would be a, a complaint basis, on a complaint basis, that, and it, it does not apply to entry. We do not, we would not have permission to enter a premise.
And we, we had issues in the past where we could, wish you had this new setup, this new policy?
So, we, we, I shouldn't say routinely, we occasionally get complaints that are related to structural issues, like roofs have holes in them, or buildings have holes in them. And with those kind of issues, Jim Meacham, our building inspector, can use a building code to enforce a repair on, on the structure, because again, it's a, it's a public health and safety issue. But we do, again, get those other kind of complaints that there's debris in the yard, or broken windows, or siding that needs to be replaced or, or repaired. And we simply tell those, those questions or comments that we receive, that the bill, that the village does not have a property maintenance code, that we only address issues related to health and safety, not to exterior maintenance, so to speak. So, I would say that the, the balance of those kind of, of complaints that are building code-related, health and safety-related versus maintenance-related are probably fifty-fifty. But I would say we get, you know, one or two a month, say, in the, in the time that I've been responsible for the inspection permit.
So that's your question?
Okay.
You're good, okay. I think we should, you had a question.
Yeah, I, so on that same thought, though, Jessica, on the right-of-entry. So if, if you send a notice to the homeowner saying we need to get in there, and they don't respond, or they don't answer back, is that when the warrant comes into play? Yes, we would request a, a warrant be issued, and then we would have a law enforcement, you know, police officer or the sheriff. I'm sure, like, turning her rank in.
We, we have to make attempts. We have to make attempts to enter first. If we're denied or unsuccessful, then we have to bring allegations of why we're seeking access to the, we usually go in front of the Bay Marine Municipal Court, and we seek the inspection warrant to get, to get into the village. And as, as Jessica alluded to, it's, it's often heavily complaint-driven, neighbors see, see things, animals entering the house, holes in the roof, et cetera, et cetera. That's what, both of the allegations that we rely upon to gain the access. But we have to try, we always have to try first, and just go straight for a warrant, and then we, and then we have to make the allegations and to, in order to qualify for the warrant to the court.
And then, and then my other question is, on page three, it talks about the administrative hold, and I think this is an update. Building inspector who shall be certified as one and two family inspector by the Wisconsin Department of Safety and Professionals purposes, is, does he also inspect multifamily? Yep, that would be called under the commercial code, which is in some section A. Okay, all right, yeah, so commercial covers both, like, industrial, multifamily, institutional, like, full, okay, that commercial designation is more of a, thank you.
Under the electrical code, on page two, it's redlined out that the electrical inspector would have a term of two years and receive compensation. So is there a term limit, and will there be compensation when you appoint someone?
So we have an electrical inspector consultant. It, we felt it was antiquated to have a, a term, he's, he's a consultant, he serves at the village as well. And yes, he has compensated per inspection he completes.
And then under building code on page four, when it talks about the rent penalty, is there a definition of reasonable hours? I mean, obviously, common sense, but had there ever been a problem? Where anybody said you didn't give us reasonable timeframe to, so?
But we, I've never had any issues with that, okay.
Hey. No, I guess you guys, okay. Uh.
I think I'm. Thank you, Mary.
Okay.
Okay, so, if there is something wrong with the development, let's say, I mean, a lot of this talks about issuing a building permit, too. Is there something? Um, is there, I'm thinking about inspections, could this say has nothing to do with new development, correct? These changes, really? I mean, these, these are the codes that will apply to all development in the village. Okay, so would that way, yes, it would apply to new developments? Okay, do you have a specific concern? No. I'll say no for now.
This might, I mean, I have to do this, I know who you are, but do you stand up? This might have nothing to do with this, but about an abandoned house that's a hoarder house, is there anything in the regulations on that? Make sure the house is safe, it doesn't burn down? You know, one in our neighborhood?
So, the, the section on page five talks about unmaintained exterior conditions. So as long as the exterior is, is, you know, adequately maintained, you know, I, I don't believe that this particular section of code would allow the village to take any kind of enforcement action on, on what could be a hoarder situation.
So, and I guess that, that's my, kind of my whole thing, is that we can't poke our nose into some of these houses and see if they're recording. It has to be specifically an exterior, an exterior notation.
Right.
Or something of a.
Sometimes that's no reason even, that's just no reason even living here, oh, who has jurisdiction over that?
Right, no one. So, the, I, I will couch my, my previous statement in the fact that if we did have a complaint, say, a friend or family member contacted us and said that there was a health and safety risk inside of a home, we would have the grounds to, again, request access. If access was denied, and we thought that there was a reasonable cause, then we could move forward.
I know in the past, we've done those kind of actions, that they, like, we had a house that was abandoned, but it was believed that the water was running, things like that, so, you know, so the village would step in. Or I think there are also health and safety codes that the fire department can enforce so that they know they can get in the place and assist people, get through hallways, et cetera. Now, if it's abandoned, that's another interesting wrinkle, but I could say there might be other codes that apply.
And as well as some people wanting to do, a neighbor saying, hey, I've got a wellness concern, either, you know, you know, I established a, a, the E M S, like, this. So, so it, it's kind of rapid.
Yeah, I, I had a couple of questions. On the first is on the right-of-entry, and I think either Jesse, I think it's Jesse said, if there's a.
Oh, first of all.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bill Harbeck, nine oh seven seventeen thousand. It, it's, you know, you have a, a permit pulled for a particular electrical project or plumbing project, and then the inspector has the right to come in and make sure the work was done correctly. That's the point of the right-of-entry there, which I get. And to, to me, this is worded more broadly than that. It's not, it's not to only make sure that the permitted work has been done correctly, which you should be able to do. It says for any proper purpose and for the purpose, or for the purpose of making an inspection. I, I would be a little worried about what is a proper purpose here? Is a building inspector making, well, I'm here for another reason, I can come in for another reason other than to do what I think is intended. So that language would, that.
Mr. Harbeck, can, can you reference a page, please, so we can follow along?
Right-of-entry, it's on page four, it's the, it's the new language dealing with right-of.
On, on building code?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, yeah.
I think you referenced something about an electrical code.
Well, I, when, when we were talking about the right-of-entry, the justification was given for, somebody pulls a permit, want to make sure that it was done correctly, makes sense. This doesn't limit it to that type of activity. It says for any proper purpose, which to me is very broad. I know what the intent is, but I guess I would pay a little more attention to that meeting, I think people, as some people mentioned, might get a little bit worried about that. What are we doing here?
Okay.
The second, the second question I had is back to the maintenance. And it's section, it's the ones, for example, page five or six, and it's subsection I, allow the unmain material, like, exterior conditions of structures, properties to exist. Who makes the call about whether something is maintained or not? Are there criteria that, that govern that, or is it one person saying, I think we need, we've got some problems with paint shipping? That's to me, unmaintained, and now we get to go through the rest of this process. Are there any standards that are used other than you'll know it when you see it?
It would be a subjective evaluation by staff. Yeah.
Staff is who?
The building inspector. So, this, this language has been in the code probably for decades. Again, if the Village Board doesn't want to, if it's toe in the water, or if it does, and it wants staff to examine a more detailed property maintenance code, those are definitely options.
Okay. All right.
Yep, that, that was, right, too.
With the thought of being more specific? If that's what the board wants, yes.
Yep.
Instead of general and maybe a little.
So, so just help me, just one, one question here is that what we're basically doing in I is if there's a complaint coming in from a neighbor that says, hey, I, you know, the siding blew off, or my neighbor's house isn't painted. So, basically, what would happen at that point, that would be listed as a complaint, correct? And then the, the building inspector then would go over and take a look at that and see if it really does meet the subjective standards for maintenance for the exterior of the property. And at that point, they would advise, you know, in theory, you know, without getting into this too deep, it's basically complaint-driven.
We, we send a letter to the property owner, identifying the problem, identifying a timeframe that it should be corrected, and then we would work with that property owner and addressing the problem.
Okay. All right.
I feel that's why we have a building inspector, we use their expertise in this field to give us their opinion.
So, are, are, are we really changing it from, because we're, we're taking out abandoned, unoccupied, or foreclosed structures? And now saying it can be anybody's structure, correct?
Correct.
So, I mean, that's a plus, in my opinion. There are some structures that are not technically abandoned that might have some problems. And I guess what I'm hearing is it's complaint-driven, so if forty people in the neighborhood send a complaint, hopefully, the building inspector, one person, and/or I'm assuming you might have some input also, to be able to make a decision. Correct.
I'm assuming it only takes one complaint, though, correct?
It does, we would evaluate all complaints.
And I think it's important to note here, too, coming from an enforcement background, part of this decision-making process by staff is the, the context of the situation. Did that siding just blow off in a storm, and they're simply waiting for the replacement siding to be delivered by Home Depot to, to have it reinstalled? Has it been a longstanding issue? Is, is the property owner just simply, oh, yeah, that is a problem, I'll work with you to address that issue at hand? Or are, is the property owner being obstinate about it and just simply not, not wanting to comply whatsoever with any sort of aesthetics to their property, considering they're within a neighborhood? So there is a lot that goes into that decision-making process, and just kind of adding context to the thought process there from my enforcement experience.
So, lastly on this, what we're basically doing is taking the state codes again and implementing them into our building, electric, and plumbing codes. And then essentially, what we're seeing here is, as trustee Harbeck said, is, you know, allowing the complaint to be a little bit more broadened, instead of saying they have to be abandoned or, you know. Okay, so.
What does the state code actually say? Does it say abandoned, unoccupied, or foreclosed? No, this is not a state code. Okay, it would be a, okay, yeah, did you reference that, we're kind of going on the state code?
State code, it's kind of like we do with the fire department, we adapt the state codes for plumbing, electric code, and building code. But this is just the one that's, that really talks about us being able to enforce a little more broadly.
At the local level.
You know, houses that, you know, that, that are complaint-driven by the, by the, by the neighbors.
I wish it would be more specific.
So, a motion and second here, over a vote on this, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay. Just hoping for more specifics.
Thank you. All right, that vote is, uh, five to one in favor. For the next item, which would be going to ask the board here, uh, we're going to be voting on, um, authorizing a general obligation files for. Street for sewage and for water. And we just went through that with, uh, with finance. Uh, would the board be okay here with doing, um. The resolution for all three or do you want to take these? Consensus for all three. Okay, get up. Jesse, you want to get it? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, there's three plus the overall one.
Yep. I guess from, from the administration standpoint, I would recommend, um, that there's a level of comfort with taking the three. Initial resolutions specifically identifying and breaking out, but then staking, taking a standalone action on that fourth resolution. Which is the cumulative, uh, resolution, if you will, um, and then authorizing to go out to market. Um, that, that would be my advice.
Very good. So we'll take three plus one on this one. So, um, essentially I'm looking for, again, this is a resolution. So we'll need an offer. Uh, the, um, and offer a first and a second on this one. Looks like we have, uh, here. For the one point one million dollars, uh, general obligation bond for street improvement projects. Um, we will be looking for, uh, two point six two million, uh, general obligation bonds for the sewage. One point three six five general obligation for bonds for water systems. Don't need them, uh, and offer a motion and second.
I will answer.
Motion.
We've been offered a motion and second on this. Any discussion? All right, we'll look for a vote on this on paper. Say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we'll look at, uh, item I here, revolution for, uh, providing for the, uh, uh, for the sale of, uh. Bonds not to exceed five point zero eight five million dollar general obligation corporate purchase bonds for series, uh, twenty twenty three eight. That is also, uh, requires a, um, an offer, a motion and a second. Motion and second please, all should.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on this at all? All right, we have a motion, I offer a motion and second upon favor say aye. On to our next item here. Number J or letter J, village trusty appointment process.
Absolutely. At the April eighteenth meeting, the village board chose to fill the trustee vacancy via an appointment process. Um, that said, uh, before the village board this evening, um, as, um, promised, uh, at that last meeting and for delivery here. We've got the, um. Timeline of the, uh, process laid out for the board. It is a, um, straightforward process whereby. The, uh, advertisements for the vacancy have been placed. Um, we have the timeline before the board this evening for, uh, consideration, um, and possible approval. The applications for interested parties to apply to interview for the, um, open seat would be May eleventh at four P M. Immediately following that, the clerk would determine the order of interviews by random draw. Uh, very similar to how names are set forth on the, um, official ballots. Uh, with that, um. The applications associated application materials as well as, um, interview, uh, questions will be distributed to the village board as part of the regular meeting packet. Then in open session at the May fifteenth meeting, the village board shall interview the candidate, candidates individually. While the other candidates are asked to be excused from the room. It is an open public meeting. They can stay. However, we do ask out of courtesy as part of the interview process that they, um, uh, convene in the committee room. And I would fetch them for their individual interviews. Um, and then with that, upon completion of the interviews, the vor, the board with the ballot that is attached. However, it should be noted that on this ballot form, a, uh, additional line will be added for the trustee's name placing that vote. Um, this vote does happen in open session, so the trustee's vote needs to have an identifier on it. So there will be a. Name line on the ballot form. With that, um, after the interviews are finalized, the village board will vote. And the village attorney will note the vote tally, um, again, in open session, um, to. Uh, whittle down the field. Either there is a majority vote for one candidate right away. Or a series of votes to, um, whittle down the field. That I have seen it work both ways, um, here, uh, in Grafton since, uh, my time here. Um, and with that then, um, with that identified candidate. Uh, there would have to be a formal motion, uh, to approve the appointment of that individual to the village board. Then, um, as soon thereafter, um, the village clerk would swear in the newly appointed board member. And their term of office is assumed. The first official meeting would be June fifth then. Um, so that is the process before the village board, uh, for approval this evening.
All right, we'll need a motion in the second for discussion, with a motion on that.
A motion.
A motion and second discussion on this process.
Has there been any change in this process since the last time?
No, we, uh, actually I think it's important to note though, that a very valid point was brought up during that previous discussion that, um. The, uh, questions come to the board. They are not, um, preliminary, uh, distributed to the candidates. That way it is more like a true pure interview process whereby the board is asking the questions. It doesn't come in, um, staged or, or preloaded by the applicants. It is more of an actual question and answer session by the board.
And, uh, and we'll, and we'll get those.
Yes.
In the packet.
Yes, ma'am.
To the meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, um, there will also be an opportunity for us to just ask a pro question. If something they commented or something.
Yep. A general good practice is to use, use a standardized set of questions. That said, if there are follow-ups based upon comments made or answers given rather. That, that obviously i- is allowable as well as part of the process. Yep.
And I don't recall us, um, kind of numbering our choices in the past.
Uh, that was the same ballot form from the previous packet. Um, it could simply be writing down the name of the preferred candidate.
Um, I just don't remember that we were saying, you know, take this one for a second.
Right.
I, I would. We were part of that, who's not elected, but I see trustee, uh, Emeritus, uh, Creveux not in over there.
That's what I recall. You would number your first, second, third choice.
Oh, I don't, I don't recall that at all. Because what's the purpose? Because we would, you know, we would write down our choice. We would have them in. It was add them up. They say, well, this person has three, this person has two, this person has one.
Because it might be something to do with, if there was a tie, there was a tie between trustee Miller and myself and they had re-voted again.
Yeah, but that will be the tip to number the choices of people that you want. Yeah, like coming in.
I, I am open to feedback on that. We could simply make it a, a, um, preferred candidate line.
I think that makes sense.
Sure.
Yeah, because what vote if there's a tie?
Yep.
We, we would.
Absolutely.
I, um, I will then, any other questions, but I will look at. Mr. Harbeck?
Yeah, well, I had, what happens if it's three to two to one? Cause I don't know if the procedure addresses that. Let's say you have five candidates, three, two, one. The other, the zeros are gone. Are you getting rid of the, the one? Uh, what are you doing? Because the one might change the dynamic. Um, and it seems to me the preference ballot should only come into play if you have a unbreakable tie. People keep voting the same. And you got two to two to two, then you force somebody to put a second choice down to break the tie and eliminate one person.
I, I think it should just be a, it should just be your preference and then we will, we'll kind of look, look to see for attorney program to come through and say, well, we got a tie. And I think that's what happened the last time we got a tie and, you know, we'll, we'll re-vote and then people will then have a second.
Right, although last time, and I, I was here, somebody changed the vote, that vote, the tie.
Yeah.
It wasn't, you didn't go to a preference, so you didn't have like.
We did have, we did have a couple of votes.
Right.
Right.
Well, I think that that just becomes, we just go with a primary, uh, that's acceptable to everybody just so.
I, I've got one question. I mean, if there was a tie of this, this instance of two, two, two. Wouldn't it be just like a job interview? Okay, now you have a second interview, so we. Possibly ask more questions than break that tie?
That or discussion at the board level. Discussion continues amongst yourselves with that tie vote, um, to basically. Uh, um, reach a consensus. Um, so either, either way, that I would need direction from the board. I do not recall if the, um. Um, adopted resolution specifically points out a, uh, tiebreaker, if you will.
I think it's didn't say that.
I, I would, yeah, I'm sorry, I don't.
Well, I think we're going to get to that document. I think we're going to have to look at attorney. And what do we do at this point? And then he would have all the.
Uh, kicking in that.
Yeah, exactly. We can cross that bridge perhaps.
Sure.
Sure. Okay, primary voting and then, uh, we get to that point where preference voting is in agreement with everybody.
Yeah.
Can you have any, any suggestion on this? Okay. We have a motion in the second, uh, that, yes, I'm sorry, Jim.
Uh, Jesse, how many have I come so far?
So far to date, four. Yep. So there is interest out there. Yep.
That's a good thing. All right, so we have a motion and a second on this process, uh, motion to approve the appointment process. Altered with the caveat that we have, uh, individual voting on no preference until we get to second to third round to meet the. On favor. What was? There we go, on our way. Outstanding. All right, uh, next here is, uh, okay, approval of the final design of Veterans Memorial Park.
Sure. Uh, well, not a normal practice for the village board to review a fully vetted project design prior to bidding. Um, we felt at a staff level based upon the level of interest, the number of stakeholders involved, and quite frankly, the importance of this project. To bring forward the Vets Park, um, final design for village board approval. Customarily, the design process is handled at a staff level with committee input and the village board taking the action on the, um. Awarding the project bid, um, not the design itself. However, as I mentioned, the, um. Uh, importance of this, uh, project, we felt it a good practice just to come forward, uh, to the village board. That said, uh, recently we've had the, uh, joint meeting of the park, park and recreation board and the architectural review board. Uh, in April that approved the updated design for the replacement pavilion at Veterans Memorial Park. This design includes a fifty six hundred square foot community room with restrooms, kitchen and storage. A, uh, approximately a seventeen hundred square foot open air shelter aspect to the, as well. We do currently have an estimated cost for the new building of about one point six eight million dollars. This cost does not include tables, chairs, kitchen equipment, picnic tables, um, and importantly, sprinklers and alarms. I'd like to point out, uh, quickly as part of the ongoing process here to design the building. And since that joint park and rec board and architectural review board meeting was ha- uh, held. The building inspector and fire inspector did review the proposed plans, um, as well as comparing and contrasting the, uh, applicable building and fire codes. That said, the, um, designation of A two occupancy was assigned to this building. Um, because, uh, the fact that food and drink, including alcohol, will be consumed inside of the building and in the open air area. The A two occupancy requires sprinklers and alarms if the occupant load of the building is over one hundred people. The multi, the enclosed multipurpose room would accommodate approximately one hundred and forty people at tables and chairs. And up to three hundred people with chairs only. Um, that said, this, uh, designation of building, uh, uh, occupancy will require, um, additional, um. Um, design and bidding, uh, for sprinkler and alarm system work as part of the building and fire code requirements. Um, that we will as staff work to build into the, uh, final bid package. Um, again, with that though, um, this project will come back to the village board for action on the bid results. Uh, for the building construction as well as that, uh, sprinkler and fire alarm system installation aspect that I was just speaking to. Construction timing will be determined based upon favorable bids, availability of contractors and materials. We are very hopeful, fingers crossed. We can, um, kick off this project this fall with work over winter to be able to, um, utilize this. Uh, updated shelter next year. Um, that is the overview of the project and why it is before the board for final design review or, uh, final design approval.
And we've had a lot of public comment on this and multiple, uh, situations and, uh, multiple meetings. And lastly, you believe we have, uh, we have planning commission review of the site plan and that was very positive, uh, plus. Last two day. So with that, I'd like to have a motion to approve final design for Veterans Memorial Park Pavilion and direct staff. Move forward with public bid process.
Mr. Motion.
I'll second.
Uh, motion and second, any discussion on this amongst the board?
I have a question. Um, so I'm looking at the third page here. Um, the estimates for. Globalization, sanitary, electric, and on the bottom landscaping, Jesse. So it notes long restoration. Um, eight thousand dollars, seed planting, the quantity of four. Limited each for six hundred dollars each. And where's that? So each tree will be six hundred dollars, each tree, per single tree. That's something you always decide in your, to the village staff. Sure. Is this a mature tree? I mean, that seems like. Um.
You can buy about one and a half, two inch diameter trees and maybe range, I'll say between about one seventy five and three fiftyish, any other. And the rest of that in there is probably labor and.
Okay, it's, I mean, at six hundred dollars, a tree seems huge. So we could buy more trees if we could. Maybe have a little.
Yeah, some of these larger trees, if you get a, if you get a four to six inch, you can spend two thousand to one five hundred dollars for insertion on those big tree.
Right, I would just hopefully we could save some money and maybe, if that's possible.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the favors. I'm sorry, uh.
How much money is Arpa paid for this project? It's like three hundred thousand?
Uh, as I recall, the allocation is three hundred thousand dollars from Arpa, yes, sir.
So you bought one point three million then plus tables and chairs or whatever.
Hmm.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, we, motion and second on favor. I.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, move on.
Congratulations, Jeff.
Great work. And it's been a long, uh, it's been a long, a long path, but I think we got a lot of interest in this to be a very positive project, so great work. All right, we're moving to report of finance, um, Jesse Paul.
Uh, sure, I'll, uh, bat lead off here. Uh, Paul can fill in any, uh, gaps, uh, should I have any here? Um, that said, before the, uh, village board this evening, our two items from the, uh, April sixth finance committee meeting. One being the lease policy. This is a, um, policy that simply puts to paper a practice we adopted at a staff level late last year. Whereby grant applications need to come to my office regardless of department, need to come to my office. For, um, recording with finance so that we know what grant applications are going out, what we might expect for proceeds. And whether or not there are any ongoing costs associated with, um, that grant program. But also a review from a village standpoint through my office prior to submission, whether it's to the D N R, FEMA, um. Uh, whichever agency, um, that grant needs to be reviewed and approved by my office, but also catalogued, uh, with finance for tracking purposes. Um, excuse me, our auditors actually came forward and, uh, mentioned that, um. Um, the grant management policy would be, um, uh, preferred. Now, the other item, I'm sorry, I'm actually working backwards here. The lease hold policy is a new accounting rule that the village needs to follow. Um, we lease our, uh, fleet vehicles for the police department and under this new rule. Um, set forth by Gatsby, the government accounting standards board, uh, we need to account for that and show that in our accounting records. So this policy sets forth our process to do just that. Um, so those are the two items before the village board this evening. They're both coming forward out of finance with a recommendation to approve.
All right, so, um, we have, uh. I'm going to motion to approve the lease policy, um, and I'm looking to approve the grant management policy. Is it okay with us if we take this as a single motion there? Yes, okay, very good. So look for a motion and a second, uh, to approve the lease policy and also the grant manag- management policy.
Our motion to approve.
Oh, sir.
We have a motion and second, any discussion here?
Yes, I know. Um, so Jesse, on the, um, lease policy, and I think Paul, we talked a little bit about this, I think in finance, about this, um. And we lease things like, uh, machines and, um, cotton machines and things like that. And so, but this says that will apply if the value is less than fifteen thousand dollars then.
Correct, so.
Right.
Uh, copiers do not qualify under this lease.
Right, well, this is just for bigger ticket items.
Correct.
Okay.
Vehicles, uh, silverback, usually it's going to be vehicles and then also on the same token, um, anything that we lease, so.
Anything that be leased, so water tower. Please, the tower at the police department, that's helpful, and so you have to account for that. A little bit differently.
Okay, and then my only other. Comment, Jesse, is under the grant management, so lists the roles and responsibilities and under administrator. It does say that you will approve them, but I just really want to make sure that the word reviewed is in there.
Sure.
I mean, you said it right now, but it just really says approved, so I just.
No, that's fair.
I know you're going to review them, but I just wanted it in there.
Happy to add that.
Any other discussion here? Yeah.
Jesse, have you checked into how much more it costs? When you're leasing a vehicle, it's like one of the worst investments you can make.
I know the village board has had a review and I know we have one pending as we get further into the. Police fleet lease cycle. Other leases that we've had for different vehicles in essence are a longer term financing plan. But it's classified as a lease whereby we end up either owning it or selling it and. Taking on those proceeds, so that could be a discussion for a future board meeting, absolutely.
I think this kind of question that we brought up a lot in in the past.
And I'm always at a short end and I will continue to vote, no.
No, I think that's, I think that's fair, but I think what we probably need to do. I think we probably need to do a better job of talking about how leases work. It's very challenging once you lease to come out of doing a lease. And I I get that, Jim, so I think we probably need a little bit better explanation here at the board level for leasing. And we forward on on future leasing.
Yeah, and I know, Paul, you had said that you wanted to, well, we needed to wait until we have like a a full cycle, but you had offered to give us something. Before the end of the year or show us.
Probably over the summer.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be good, so we can.
We'll get something in front of a financial.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And at least we could see a few years. If if I may, to be clear, this policy does not designate that the village thou shalt lease. No, this this policy here just makes sure that we are following accounting rules. And booking those leases in accord with those rules that have been dictated to us. It does not say we shall lease X, Y, or Z. It does not. No, sir.
That's just essentially a lease policy that describes how we're going to manage.
The accounting. Yep. Yes, sir.
All right, any further questions on this? All right, motion in the second, on favor. We're on to the next item, which will be. All right, department officers and department officers.
Sure, I'll go ahead and bat lead off with this. I know we've got some representation here with me. That said. For my administrative report tonight, just wanted to touch on the utility. We'll begin their seasonal monthly water quality testing of the Milwaukee River. Each month between May and September, the utility tests various locations along the river and submits those results to the D N R for water quality monitoring. The D P W is taking ownership of approximately fifty new trees for planting throughout the village. A majority of these these purchased trees, the cost of which were covered by the D N R forestry grant that we apply for. Each year. Later this month, the annual liquor license applica- or inspections will be carried out. This is a combination effort with building inspection, fire, police, and partnering with the state of Wisconsin to visit the local establishments and conduct. Conduct a joint inspections involving each of the regulatory entities. So that's a nice team effort there to really. Over the course of two days later this month, meet with the respective businesses who hold liquor licenses. Do their inspections and get that feedback back to them as quickly as possible. Last but certainly not least. The Chamber of Commerce at their annual meeting on May seventeenth. Will be. Recognizing the outstanding business, who is the O two four taproom. The outstanding business person, Sean Grady, computer service specialists. The outstanding community partner, Herb Justman, Grafton Post Office. But also the outstanding public servants, Dave Antoine, Jim Brunkwell, and Tom Krieger. The village will register on behalf of the board as well as staff members who would like to attend. So please let me know if you're interested in attending Wednesday, May seventeenth. From five to seven thirty P M at the Ozaki nonprofit center. Please let me know if you're interested in attending. And I will make sure to get you registered. That is all for my report this evening.
Very good.
Jesse, I'm sorry, give me a time once more.
Yes, sir, Wednesday, May seventeenth, five P M to seven thirty P M. You're welcome.
Very good. I, we're going to try, really, this is supposed to, according to our clerk, this is the department officer, this is supposed to be a one way report here. And really, if you have a question, I. Okay with asking it, but I think that we can't forward, but just we'd like to keep it one way. If you have things that you'd like to ask. The city department heads, I would ask that you ask them. And and. But this should really be one way according to our clerk. All right, next licenses, what are the operators licenses?
Yes, we have two operators being presented by the police department for approval. A background check was conducted, including criminal history, driver's license check. As well as other status reviews. That said, the recommendation for approval of the two applicants is listed. On the I F C for the board to consider.
All right, so we have a more, we need a motion in a second on this.
A motion.
I'll say it. A motion in a second, any discussion on this? Pretty straightforward. All in favor, would I?
Aye.
All opposed, okay, very good. Next in line here, we have a report of bills. Looks like we did have some back and forth on this, as President Brunkel used to say. And what we'll be doing is looking for a motion to approve, and second, with questioning.
I will move to approve. I'll second.
A motion in second, any further questions on this?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't get you two, two questions. Under batch two, which is the trustee report. On page. Eleven. It's the rhyme company, Village Hall, replaced the phone system. It was for seventy seven hundred dollars. Is that a one time cost?
That is.
Did we recently, last few years, replace our phone system?
No, this was the ongoing phone system project that we had scheduled. We ended up having to. Very similar to the police department with their cellular bill. Ourselves here at Village Hall with our regular telephone service bill, get it straightened out with A T and T before we moved ahead with the conversion. To this new phone system. So this was a bit delayed. That said, this is a one time project and, yep, we have new phones now.
And then my only other question is. Page fifteen. Next page. This is for the traffic analysis design. For the season, this traffic study. Cost of thirty two forty. Is that being done in your future or is that going to be split?
No, sorry, Jesse. It was already completed and that doesn't pay by spell.
Okay, this was the one in August. This, this study or?
No, it was just completed in. January, I believe.
Oh, January or February?
Okay, this is for the seasons, not the forecast.
The seasons, okay. I'll have to try to look for that, maybe I can get that to me later. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
So Jesse, will that report from the traffic study be put online?
It was part of the planning package for the season concept plan. I can email to me.
Thank you, and then back to the phone system, the ARCA fund they're using for that, correct?
Yes, that was an ARCA project.
Very good. Any further questions on those? All right, we have a next one in seconds. All right, number ten, we're going to convene a full session pursuant to statutes number nineteen point eight five one B and E. For employment disciplinary matter and real estate competitive bargaining matters, sale of eight eight seven North Green Bay Road. I'm looking for a motion.
Make a motion, second.
Aye.
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 I, I, I convene a full session, please. Of course. Motion.
I've got a motion.
Second half, one second, okay. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hi.
I'm too bad.
Okay, we're out. Okay.
Still laughing, that's a good sign.
Oh, Mary Patrick meeting.
So we sit right here is we have action based on a full session, so.
Mr. President, we're looking for a motion to approve the real estate purchase agreement. As discussed in code session.
You know, Mike, that was said so well. We'll take a motion based on that, if you have a motion.
I'll second.
Give a motion in the second.
Very good.
All in favor, say.
Aye.
Aye.
Both. There we go, we have a action pertaining to that purchase. And now I will take a motion to adjourn this. Marathon.
Move there, we adjourn.